It's called order to the Spark City Council Meeting, Monday, April 25th, 2016. To order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty, absent. Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Schmidt, absent. City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We do have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Before we stand for the invocation, I'd like to announce, I'd like to do a moment of silence for a couple of people. One of our own passed away, one of our employees, 23 years here at the City of Sparks, Sherry Fanzler. Worked for us for many years, great lady, and she will be missed. And also out of the community, Don Johnston. I don't know how many of you know Don Johnston. He was the postmaster, head of the chamber, worked with the City of Sparks in many, many different ways, and was very responsible for some of the things we're doing these days. So, if we could all have a moment of silence for those two people that'll be missed, please. Okay, thank you. If you'd all rise for the invocation. Master Barbara West, Nazarene Church. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Well, our heavenly Father, we just pray that you would be with the family members after their loss. And we thank you for this great council, and for Mayor Martini and our leaders. We're thankful, too, that we can come together to be in your will, to do what business has to be done for this great city of ours. Thank you for this city, and for the leaders that you've allowed us to elect. And so today, we pray that they would all have good health and well-being, and that you would give them direction on how to vote for all of the matters that before us on the agenda today. Thank you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Barbara, appreciate that. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Smith, would you lead us?
Absolutely. You'll join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good. Okay, next, we have Public Comment under number four. I have one speaking card by Emily Espinoza. If you'd like to speak under Public Comment on any subject, fill out one of these cards and come up to the front. Welcome, Emily. Have a seat, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is, I am Youth Legislature Espinoza, representing Senate District 14, and I was here to speak on behalf of the Nevada Youth Legislature. Recently, I was fortunate enough to hold a town hall meeting at my school. I attend Reed High School here in Sparks. And in that, in that town hall meeting, I had around maybe 10, 12 high school students my age, as well as my little sister, who is currently in 5th grade, come and voice their ideas of the community. And I was greatly impressed by their wide variety of ideas, ranging from anywhere from the vending machines where we have recently, where we recently had our, we recently had sweets removed from our schools due to a nutrition, due to nutrition violation, and, as well as ranging all the way up to amending the most recent bill passed by the Nevada Youth Legislature, which granted legal amnesty to underage drinkers. And I was here to, I am here today to encourage you to reach out to the Nevada Youth Legislature, as well as anybody with questions or with any comments. We all love to hear from you guys, so, thank you for your time.
Any comments or questions for Emily?
Just one question.
Go ahead, her.
How do you, how do you get ahold of your group? Do you have a website, or?
I actually have my business card in my wallet.
Okay.
You can, we do have a website, you can look up, you can look up Nevada Youth Legislature, Senator, former Senator Winner, Valerie Winner, down in Las Vegas, is the chair of our program.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else under Public Comment? Okay, next is Approval of the Agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Not looking for a motion? Ms. Byby.
Move to approve.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Byby, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously with those present. Minutes, consideration possible, approval of minutes of the regular Spark City Council Meeting of April 11th, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Okay, looking for a motion, Ms. Byby?
Move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Byby, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2016, regular City Council Meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. And for those of you who have not been here before, we have a new voting machine that puts up pictures and everything, it's kind of...
(laughing).
We're finally...
It's so easy, we'll mess it up.
We're, we're finally into the 18th century.
(laughing).
All right, let's go on to Presentations, and let me see. 7.1 is, was for the Sparks Middle School. They were not, they were not able to be here. But I wanted to go over there. Gosh darn it, when did I do that? Do you have one of them? I know you gave it to me, when did I do that? Mr. Bumble. Okay. Julia Ratty is here, have you been speaking, have you, did you vote yes on all the rest?
I was having a hard time connecting, I just managed to connect it a couple of minutes ago.
We'll get you, we'll get you there. Okay, they were going to make a presentation on, an open house they're going to have on May 19th, Sparks Middle School Campus, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. It's their 50th anniversary celebration there, so, we'd love for you folks to be able to come there, if you all know where the Sparks Middle School is. And again, I'm sure they'll be out and about on Facebook and all the other social medias and things, and talking about this. So, it'd be nice if you could show up. They'll have some alumni, Alumni Memory Lane, SMS photo booths, Alumni Student Basketball Game, raffle fundraiser, so, one of those typical fundraisers things for their 50th anniversary, so, just wanted to mention that, thank you. Okay, 7.2 is Proclamation, Pay It Forward, Tristan Hurley Day. Ms. Byby.
Thank you. I'd like to read a proclamation on behalf of the mayor and the city council. Whereas Pay It Forward promotes community spirit through intentional acts of kindness, and whereas the Pay It Forward novel, written by Catherine Ryan Hyde in 2000, has inspired the creation of a movie made in Nevada, a nonprofit foundation, and a movement that has inspired thousands of good deeds all over the world. And whereas, in 2015, Pay It Forward was an international effort, supported by more than 76 nations, 42 states, and 48 US cities. And whereas Sparks resident Tristan Hurley, a 15-year-old student at Shaw Middle School, was born with a genetic disorder, osteogenesis imperfecta, which is characterized by brittle bones, that combined him to a wheelchair. And whereas, despite Tristan's disability, he brought great joy to his parents, family, and countless friends. He was full of life and did not allow his genetic disorder to slow him down or prevent him from providing his love and compassion to everyone he met. And whereas Tristan inspired children and adults to live their life to the fullest despite any obstacles or challenges that lie in the way. And whereas Tristan departed on Sunday, March 6th, 2016, leaving the world a better place. He brought positive change in our community and beyond. And whereas the Pay It Forward movement exemplifies the human spirit, such as Tristan displayed during his short life. We can make a difference in our community and the world, one good deed at a time. Now therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, does hereby proclaim Thursday, April 28th, 2016, as Pay It Forward Day, in honor of Tristan Hurley. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sparks, Nevada, to be affixed this 6th day of April, 2016.
Okay, also, we have Assemblywoman Jill Dickman, who's also going to read a proclamation, or one of hers, from the state. So, go ahead, Jill.
Thank you. I didn't have the privilege of meeting Tristan, but I attended his memorial service, and learned a lot about him through the eyes of his family and friends, who spoke with such passion and love and admiration of this remarkable human being. And I was sitting with Councilwoman Byby, and she said, "We have to do something to honor Tristan, so that everyone can learn from his example." I, I just, it was so moving, I wish I had been able to know him. But this world would be a much better place if we would all try to strive to live our lives like Tristan did. So, it's my honor to present this certificate of recognition to the family of Tristan, from the Nevada State Assembly. It reads, "In honor of the late Tristan Hurley, a young man who lived a life that exemplified the integrity of the human spirit, a life with a sense of humor and with courage that surpassed his years, who served as an example of how one person can motivate kindness among strangers, and whose strong and engaging character inspired the community of Sparks, Nevada, to name April 28th, 2016, as Pay It Forward Day in his honor.
There you go.
It's a great honor to be here, and we really appreciate you guys recognizing Tristan for all of his efforts and all that he's done. And, you know, as I said, at his service, Tristan had the disability, but he lived, like we all had a disability. He let nothing hold him back. And, you know, on the night of the 2nd, at the Big Horn game, and he broke his arm and his hip, he actually did a Snapchat story from the floor of the game. And, and I asked him, I said, "Son, you know, why did you do a Snapchat story?" And he says, he looked me right in the eye, and as clear as he could be, he says, "These are last moments, Dad, we have to capture them." And, and that was, that was Tristan in a nutshell. And, you know, he, he stuck up for kids that were being bullied from his wheelchair. And he, he lived life larger than life, and he captured every moment that he could, and he lived every moment to its fullest. And I really want to thank everybody here for recognizing him, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I also just wanted to thank Charlene so much, and Gino Martini, and the whole city council for recognizing my son. He may have been this larger-than-life image that everybody talks about, but to me and to our family, he was just our son, you know, and brother. And we love him very much, and thank you for honoring him.
I, I just wanted to say, I, I also did not have the chance to meet Tristan, but his story touched me, I think it did so many of us in this community. And decided to go to the services that day, didn't know Assemblywoman Dickman would be there, and she felt kind of the same way I did, that I really needed to go to honor him. And, and I was so impressed with how everyone that day, all the kids, his family, the stories that they told. Of here, you know, here this, this, this young man, who had all the reason in the world to be negative, to be, he's in pain, he, he's, he had all these things to struggle with, and yet he was the one everyone talked about, who lit up everyone else's life. And I just found that amazing, and something, just a lesson, that we could all definitely learn from. I'd like to invite everyone, when I wanted to honor him today, the Pay It Forward seemed perfect for who Tristan was. So I'm asking everyone in the room today, anybody watching, to honor Tristan, and to honor that movement of kindness, because the world isn't a very kind place anymore. And I think that we can all do better. And I think all of us have the power to go out and, and change someone's life in one moment, on, you know, not on one day, on every day. So I ask you to join with us on Thursday, and spread it through social media, and family and friends, of everyone that day to just do something kind, whether it's paying for fast food or coffee, the person in line behind you, opening a door, a smile, sending someone a card, or reaching out to someone you know might need, need some positive words of encouragement. Whatever you can do, it doesn't have to be big, but everyone can make a difference. And I, I think truly the act of giving can transform you. And I thank you all, thank you for being here today, thank you for your amazing son, and I hope that going forward, we can all keep him in mind, and his legacy will be a movement of kindness in our community.
Thanks, folks. Okay, let's move on to 7.3, Proclamation, Longford, Ireland Day. Is there someone from the Sons of Aaron here to accept this? Come on down. Okay, I'll go ahead and read it, and then I'll present it to you. Proclamation, whereas the town of Longford, Ireland, is the county town or county Longford, one of 32 counties in the island of Ireland. And whereas the town of Longford, in the City of Sparks, Nevada, in the United States of America, did in 1976, establish a twin-city relationship, becoming the first twinning of a city in America with Ireland. And whereas the City of Sparks, Nevada, in 1976, in honor of the 200th anniversary of the birth of the United States of America, established the neighborhood recreational park known as Longford Park in the City of Sparks. And whereas Longford Park, as the City of Sparks, is a consistent and regular reminder of the relationships of our twin cities have forged. And whereas the City of Sparks, Nevada, highly values this unique twinning, and was honored in 2005 to host a delegation of Longford councilors and dignitaries to our city. And whereas the City of Sparks, Nevada, acknowledges and celebrates Irish arts, culture, and history, and the impact the people of Ireland have made in our own American heritage and history. And whereas this year, the Republic of Ireland will celebrate the nation's 100th anniversary of its independence. And whereas the City of Sparks, Nevada, joins in the celebration of the birth of the Irish Nation in 2016, and sends best wishes to Longford Town. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2016, as Longford, Ireland Day, and encourage all citizens in the City of Sparks to join in remembrance of our friends in the city of Longford, Ireland, and in the unique and enduring relationship our two cities have forged.
Take it. We are the president and the treasurer of the Sons and Daughters of Aaron of Northern Nevada. We are Northern Nevada's Irish Heritage Organization. We are very honored to accept this today, and we're very honored to accept it during the week of the Easter uprising that occurred 100 years ago at this time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Willie, for being here, appreciate it.[1256.12][1256.12](applause). Okay, next is the Proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Is someone here to accept this? Come on down, sir. Have a seat, and then I'll present it to you, after I read it. Whereas April 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of Title IX, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing, and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added familial status and handicap to those classes protected by Title VIII, and added strong new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and judicial and administrative efforts, enforcement procedures. And whereas Nevada, Nevada state law also prohibits discrimination on the basis of ancestry, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression. And whereas it is the solemn and sworn duty of governments, all, at all levels, to defend the rights of all citizens and oppose housing discrimination whenever and wherever it occurs. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, that diminish the rights of some of our citizens, diminish the rules of all. And whereas Silver State Fair Housing Council actively works to ensure equal housing opportunity for all people in Nevada, to freely choose where they want and can afford to live, and the City of Sparks supports the efforts of Silver State Fair Housing Council, and all agencies pursuing fair housing. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Fair Housing Month.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, for the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Roberto Ortiz, and I'm the Director of Programs for Silver State Fair Housing Council. We're a nonprofit agency that advocates for equal housing opportunity for all residents of Nevada. Our agency has had a long and very productive relationship with the City of Sparks, providing fair housing services, awareness, and advocacy for the City of Sparks residents, not only for the residents, but also for housing providers and all other social service agencies under our CDBG funding program. On behalf of the board and the staff for Silver State Fair Housing Council, we thank you for the continuing effort to affirm further fair housing for the City of Sparks. We believe that equal housing opportunity is, allows us to break out barriers in the community, and to really each others as neighbors and individuals. Thank you very much.[1481.04][1481.04](applause).
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, we appreciate what your group does, really. Okay, let's move on to 7.5. Proclamation for Medical Laboratory Week. Someone here to receive this? Come on down, please. This is a new one, I think, I haven't seen this one in 10 years, so...[1512.12][1512.12](laughing). Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Whereas professionals who practice in the medical laboratory, including pathologists, clinical laboratory scientists, medical laboratory technicians, and phlebotomists are invaluable members of the patient's healthcare team. And whereas these well-educated and highly-trained health professionals who perform and evaluate medical laboratory tests to direct, diagnose, monitor treatment, and help prevent diseases save countless lives each day. And whereas their dedication to quality of medical testing and exceptional patient care is demonstrated daily in hundreds of laboratories in Nevada, including the City of Sparks. And whereas laboratory medicine is an honorable profession, vital to sustaining a high standard of healthcare. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 24th through the 30th, 2016, as Medical Laboratory Week in Sparks, Nevada, and urge our citizens to honor our healthcare professionals by acknowledging their special services in our community.
Hi, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director at Northern Nevada Medical Center. We want to appreciate you guys for your support in our community, and we love being the only hospital in Sparks to be of service to you guys. Thank you.
2:30. Yeah, we'll be there. One more, and we're done, we'll be there. Okay, the next one is Proclamation for Arbor Day. Someone from the city here, Tracy, nobody? Okay, I'll read it and give it to her later. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate and temperature, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving up, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and duty of our community. And whereas Sparks is recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2016, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Thank you.[1753.95][1753.95](applause). And we will, oh, there she is. So you can tell us about Arbor Day and where it's at, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for this proclamation. We do this every year, and we're excited to announce that this Friday, on Arbor Day, we're going to be doing a tree planting at Lena Juniper School, which is adjacent to our Imoni Park. And for various reasons, and due to the health of the trees, we have had to remove some trees in that park, so we're excited to say that... we have had to remove some trees in that park, so we're excited to say that those trees will be replaced, and the kids are going to help us plant one of them on Friday at 11:15.
And Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, but in order for us to be a Tree City USA designee, we have to do this particular ceremony every year? Is this one of the things we have to do?
Yes, it is one of those things. It's the funnest one.
Plus, we get to plant trees, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Okay, now we have a... See, Ed, look at your computer. What time is it?
2:30.
Am I good? Am I good or what? Am I good? Am I good or what? We'll do that in a minute. We'll do the last commendation here in a few minutes, but we have a time-certain 2:30 presentation that we need to do. 9.2. Presentation, discussion, direct to staff, direction to staff, and potential approval of the New Smarter Region Economic Development Board Vision Statement, time certain, 2:30 PM. Come on up, folks. Hey, we have things to throw at you, Bill.
Well, Mayor and Council, the reason why we've included this is a part of our coming together as a region. As you know, when I got elected to the City Council, we were right in the middle of the worst economic downturn in our history. And my goal was to bring as much business and be as business-friendly as possible. And Reno got a grant from IBM to study the things that we can do. So with me today, I have Maureen McKissick, who's from the City of Reno, who was the leading person on this to get this thing moving in the right direction. Also have Jason Geddes from the University System, and also Stephanie Kraus from KPS3. So I'm going to let Maureen go ahead and start out and give us some background history, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. So for the record, Maureen McKissick from the City of Reno. We are going to be doing a PowerPoint presentation today. I'll do the introductory slides, and then I'm going to be turning it over to my colleagues for various inputs. So just a quick recap, and as Councilman Lawson said, when Reno submitted this grant, it was pre-Tesla, it was pre-switch, it was pre-some of the economic wins that the community has had. And we essentially asked for IBM's help in how we could improve our economic development outcomes. And so they sent a team of people into our region for three weeks to develop a roadmap. These were, and I think it's important to go over, the objective was how we could use our own data a little more predictively, a little more proactively. They took an approach using data research as well as interviews. And the assumptions they made was that economic development encompassed retention as well as attraction. These were the five recommendations they developed, and I know you've seen them before. The first one, change your mindset, they thought was the foundation. They were very clear that if we couldn't accomplish that, we couldn't accomplish very much. And so we had to begin thinking regionally. Be one strong voice advocated for EDON to be the one strong voice that our region used to the outside world. Harness the data, talked about how we could effectively begin to combine our data more proactively. Brand the vision, not the slogan, is the reason we're before you this afternoon. And invest in your people spoke to our K-12 and higher education systems, and how money didn't solve everything, but that it was virtually delusional to think that these systems, which were being starved, could begin to perform. They thought that was the most potentially controversial recommendation that they made. So we, in fact, have made progress on this. Two years ago, we moved it from being a City of Reno project to a regional project. It now encompasses 11 different entities, both public and private. The three jurisdictions are part of that, regional planning, the Chamber, EDON. We have an array of agencies that have been working collaboratively. We have ratified EDON as our one strong voice. TMRPA is leading the charge on data, and they have begun working much more intensively with higher education. They were a big part of the EPIC study, which came out a few months ago. And they have begun really to look at data as to what it can offer our region in terms of insights. The current focus today is around branding the vision and not the slogan. And I'm going to turn this over to Stephanie Cruz to lead us through what brand visioning is.
Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, Stephanie Cruz, a perpetual economic development volunteer representing EDON here today. And also, given my background in marketing and branding, just a little bit of background about what we're talking about. The region and its entities have had many, many slogans and advertising campaigns, and all types of phrases that they've used over the years, but that's not what we're here today to discuss. The directive from the Smarter Region Group was to have us brand the region, not the slogan. And today, we are talking about the economic development vision. It is aspirational. It is how we are going to differentiate ourselves against other very strong competitors in economic development, and it will be the guiding light that EDON and others will use in order to differentiate this region to succeed in economic development. The process was wonderful, and I want to take a moment to applaud Councilman Lawson for his work on this. We got a great group of folks together from all of the jurisdictions, and there was a great energy in the room. We loved it. It felt like great creativity and great energy, and we really appreciated all of the effort. Economic development knows no political boundaries, which is why this cross-section of people who represented the region's jurisdictions were so important for us to have. It's literally going to be what we have as EDON's regional boundaries as a regional development authority. They are designated as a regional development authority by the state of Nevada. Next. Sorry, I'm...
All right. Jason, I'm going to have you come in, the next one. So the four, the five of us that worked on this slogan was Councilman Bob Dion, who unfortunately is sick today, myself, Wash County Commissioner Bob Lucy, who unfortunately got stuck on an airplane, and Verona Frinkle, who has another medical issue with a family member. But Jason's here.
So if you work on this thing, you have a death wish?
There must be something there that's in common. But I think the thing for me that was the best was getting all of us in the same room and really coming up with a slogan, and really looking at the history of Nevada. And we all agreed that one thing Nevada has been is innovative. It's been able to change itself with the times to become a leader in several areas. Some areas maybe not the greatest, but, you know, in mining, and for example, in gaming, and also even at one point, and I'm not sure that the Mormon Church was the largest population in Nevada for a while. So it's been an interesting dichotomy of things that we've become over time, so we thought that that was important for us to do. So I'm going to let you go ahead. Jason, talk about this.
So I'll...
Sorry.
You can tell this is the first time we're doing this. So thank you. So we wanted to quickly give you a background on what IBM thought. These were five people who had never seen this part of the country before, let alone Reno. On the right-hand side, there are five bullet points that they thought were some of the local attributes that we should be aware of if we build the macro brand, which is interesting apropos of Reno and Sparks both doing master plan updates and hearing what our citizens think. So I think these themes have been corroborated throughout the process.
So here's where we come back to what we came up as a brand. We are pioneers, innovators, and risk-takers. We embrace those with determination to get business done today while setting their sights on the possibilities of a bold new tomorrow. And I think that encapsulated what Nevada has been since its inception. So we spent, what, two or three meetings on this and several hours, and whittled this down from a chalkboard full of ideas to this brand statement. It's not unique just to any one city or region. It's unique to our state. So we think that it encompasses what we're trying to get.
And we just want to talk about the process there. You can see the timeline up on the screen as far as bringing it to all the jurisdictions. Just based on scheduling, we were able to go first, and we took it through the Truckee Meadows Community College Institutional Advisory Committee. It's made up of local leaders, private industry. We presented it to them, vetted it to them, answered their questions. They loved it, recommended that the Board of Regents approve it. We took it to the Community College Collaborative, got unanimous approval through the Community College Collaborative to bring it forward as the vision. And then the Board of Regents approved it in December of last year as something that the entire system will get behind, focusing on this region. Obviously, we're here before you today, seeking your approval. And then it'll be going to Wash County, Wash County School District tomorrow, and the City of Reno on Wednesday.
Okay, questions?
Questions?
No questions? Julia, you still there?
I am. I just have you on mute.
Okay. Any questions? All right, looking for a motion.
Okay, I will. Move to accept the report and continue on the direction you're going. Very good report.
Here, we have a motion by Mr. Smith seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the agenda item with direction to Smarter Cities. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, or please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
That's a yes.
Passed unanimously.
Mine's a yes.
Wait a minute.
Passed unanimously, by the way. If you can't figure this new voting system out...
It's pretty simple.
That's why we did it. So you'll never know how we vote, so. Thanks, folks. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, let's go back to 7.7. Rajan, you're here to accept this. Commendation. Whereas the Faith Forum, a weekly religious dialogue at the award-winning Reno Gazette Journal, has recently completed five years in print. And whereas religious statesman Rajan Zed, who has been bestowed with World Interfaith Leader Award, leads a panel of local leaders of various denominations to produce this weekly discussion forum in the Sunday Reno Gazette Journal involving important religious issues affecting local, national, and international religions, regions. And whereas Rajan Zed points out that religion is powerful and complex, and is interconnected and dependent on each other. If we dig deeper, we find that we have more in common than in conflict. This widely-read column is for the constructive dialogue which has brought mutual understanding and trust and loyalty in the community. And whereas panelists currently include Father Robert W. Chori, Father Charles T. Durante, Monique Jacobs, Lori Ann Reinhardt, All-American Catholic, Dr. Steve B. Bond, Christian Church, Dr. Sharif A. Alfas, Muslim, Father Stephen R. Cartridge, Greek Orthodox, Reverend Matthew T. Fisher, Buddhist, Rabbi Elizabeth Webb Byer, Orthodox Jewish, Charla S. Hales, and Ryan J. Earl, both of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Dr. Bradley S. Corbin-Bahai, Brian E. Melendez, Native American spirituality, and Dr. Kenneth G. Lucy, Religion Professor at UNR. Guest panelists belonging to diverse religious denominations are also invited to participate from time to time. We would also like to recognize the Reno Gazette Journal and the Faith Forum. John Maher, President, publisher of the Reno Gazette Journal, Kellyanne Scott, Reno Gazette Journal Executive Director, and Rajan Zed, Faith Forum Producer and Religious Statesman. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby congratulate the Reno Gazette Journal's column, Faith Forum, for completing five years in print. Thank you. Can I say a few words?
Thanks, Gino, and the council members for this commendation. This, as Gino told you, this Faith Forum is a weekly, we write Sunday after Sunday for more than five years. I'm the producer. We have 10 different panelists who belong to diverse religions, as Roman Catholic, Protestant, Christian, Muslim, Buddhist, Jewish, Mormon, Greek Orthodox, Bahai, Native American. And we have a Religion Professor also from UNR. So purpose is to live together harmoniously despite our seriously different traditions. So that is the purpose. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Rajan, for putting this together. I know you worked on it very hard for a long time. It's really a good organization. If you go to some of their meetings and dinners and things, it's really wonderful to see all the religions get together and just have a good time and talk. I mean, they're all good people. They really are. They've just got different beliefs and different gods and that things, but there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, I really enjoy going and listening to these people talk, and I learn so much, especially for him, about every religion in the world. It's really... I love to see these people get together. I wish the whole world could do more of this kind of stuff instead of the stuff that we do. So thank you, Rajan.
We are all looking for the truth, you know, and if we join our efforts, so we can reach faster, you know.
So if you want to come up, we'll take a picture with the council. Plus, Steve. Chad, come on. Let me make sure this is legal. One, two, three. Okay, one more camera. One, two, three. One, two, three. Again, thanks, Rajan, for continuing to put the Faith Forum together. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to Consent Items 8.1. Yeah, we'll have to do that too. Okay. I'm sorry. 7.8 Sparks Fire Department Project Safe: Remembering When a Fire and Fall Prevention Program for Older Adults. Mr. King?
I didn't mean to shut you up there, pal. Go ahead. I thought, wow, this one you don't even have to read a proclamation. I get to go over talking. All right. Mr. Mayor and Member of the Council, Robert King, Fire Marshal for Sparks Fire Department, and Harry Irman from American Red Cross, here to give you just a little presentation on a brand-new program, Fire and Life Safety Program, that we have implemented in the City of Sparks. It's called Remembering When: A Fire and Fall Prevention Program for Older Adults. So why this program? There's two main reasons. One, this program meets part of our city mission by providing a safe environment for our citizens, and it meets our strategic goal 4.2 by improving safety through prevention activities. And then number two is Project Safe Residential Smoke Alarm Program, which you all know about, turned 10 years old this year. So in 2006 is when we started the education part of this program. And it's been a very successful program for the City of Sparks, and we even have three documented saves out of this program, which is very awesome on our eyes. We have installed over 3,200 smoke alarms in 1,100 homes through this program. So as part of Project Safe's 10-year anniversary, I wanted to add an additional fire and life safety element that is truly needed in our community. Through research, I found out that age 65 and older adults are twice as likely to be injured or killed in fires compared to population at large. Age 75, that risk increases by three times, and age 85 by four times. Falls are also a very huge issue in our population, in that population, as 35% of people 65 years or older are involved in falls each year. Now, I know our crews go out on calls on fall... Now, I know our crews go out on calls on falls and older adults every day. I hear it on the radio absolutely every day. So, I'm not saying that this program that is implemented will definitely prevent that from happening in all of our city, but education is definitely a great start and will help limit that, hopefully. That's our goals. So by focusing on these two serious issues through the NFPA Remembering When Fire and Fall Prevention Program, I feel that we can make a measurable difference in falls and safety in our, in our community. So how and when did this start? Back in August 2015, I submitted a scholarship application to the National Fire Protection Association to attend a three-day Remembering When seminar. And out of 250 communities that submitted applications, we were one of 25 that were accepted to attend the seminar. And so myself and one of our inspectors, Inspector Recov, attended this seminar for three days on their dime to learn all we can about remembering when and bring it back to our community to implement. Well, with any type of scholarship or a grant type of program, they had some criteria for us when we came back as well. And they had four of them. One, we had to team up with a community partner. So we found about the best community partner that we thought we could find in our community, and that's through the American Red Cross. What a perfect partnership to have, someone who already goes out there and helps out, the community helps out, works with older adults already, and we worked together many, many times on the scenes out there. So what a great partnership. I went and talked with them and they said absolutely they would love to become our partner. And that was a criteria for us to actually attend this seminar, was we had to have a main partner. The number two thing, we had to come back, educate all of our team members that we have to implement this program, and we did that. And then we have to conduct 25 home visits throughout the community. For us, that was an easy task. We're already going out on a monthly basis with our Project Safe program and installing smoke alarms, CO detectors, and educating the citizens in our community. So we'll install this program right into Project Safe. It just works out perfectly. The fourth one was we have to conduct five community group presentations. They wanted us to do group presentations throughout the community. So on April 21st, we did our first group presentation at the Sparks Senior Center, and it turned out really well. We had us, it was a small amount of people for this one, but it was a great tester. They all loved it, they learned a lot, and it just turned out to be a real good event over there at Sparks Senior Center. On May 27th, we go back to Sparks Senior Center and do another presentation there. On May 12th, it's our biggest presentation of the year, and this is one that I want to extend an invitation to all of you to attend. I think when you see this presentation, you'll be very impressed. And it's going to be held at the Sparks Nugget. Now, I have representatives here from the Sparks Nugget as well, they're partnering with us, and they donated an entire room, all the setup, the tables and chairs, everything we need, including lunch for 100 people for this program. So that's, that's a great partner. They felt that this was a very good program as well, and, and holding it in their venue would, would really work out well in one of their big rooms. So we're really, really excited about that program. And again, I'd like to invite all of you out. It's from 10 till 2, so you can come anytime in between that, and you'll get to see what we're doing. Remembering When teaches 16 different fire and life safety issues. It has eight fire and eight fall messages that we teach, and we're going to have tables that teach each one of those. When you see it, you'll, you'll really think it's a well-run program. On August 6th, we'll be at Morningstar Independent Living in Wingfield Springs, and then on October 8th, we'll be at, at our own Sparks Fire Department at our Pancake Breakfast Open House. We'll have everything out, out there as well. So just real quick, some accolades to our educational partners. We really have a lot of people that stepped up to help us out with this. We have the Sparks Recreation and Parks and Recreation Department, Tracy Dominguez, absolutely she would love to work with us on that. Sparks Housing Rehabilitation Program, George Graham, which I know is here. Sparks Police Department, Dennis Rodri, is here, he's helping us out as well, and he was at our, at our first one at the Sparks Senior Center, which worked out. We have the Sparks Nugget, Lisa Jensen is here. We have the Trauma Intervention Program, Haley King is in the audience, and that is relation, that's my daughter, so I do have to point her out. We also have our Fire Prevention Staff, our Assistant Fire Marshal, Chris McCubbins, Inspectors James Recov, Chris Van Ness, Don Parsons, and Major Herrick are all involved in this program. And then Washoe County Senior Services and Sparks Disability Services are all involved in this program as well. So you can see that we do have a lot of partners in this program, and I think it's going to work out really well, something that will continue as the years go on as well. We'll see how it goes and continue going. So that's, that's what I just wanted to give you a brief on this. I know I spoke with you quite a, quite a while back and told you this is what we'd like to do, and you gave your approval to go to this, to go to the scholarship seminar. So I wanted to make sure you, you heard what, what's coming out of this as well. And now I'd just like to hand it over to, to Harry Irman, he wanted to say a couple of words from American Red Cross.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for having us come out and actually chat with you in reference to the program. And I wanted to thank Bob personally for actually inviting me when he first started to get the initial information in reference to the program itself. And when I started to read about the program, I felt that it was a natural marriage between the Red Cross and the Sparks Fire Department to actually push this program on further and further. And so we're really, really excited about what we're able to do amongst the community and helping those folks that may be in need or just may need that information to, to make their day a little bit safer or their home a little bit safer. And so we're really excited about moving forward with the project, and I just want to say thank you very much for inviting us.
Questions?
I just have one question. On May 12th, the big event at the Nugget, is that open to Reno, Sparks, the whole Northern Nevada community? Anyone can attend?
It is, yes. We'll be, I'll be sending out a media release here on pretty soon. The Nugget even said that they will put it up on their board for us. So it's, it's one of those where we're, we're not sure how many are going to go in to attend. We'll, we'll see, but we're, we're pretty prepared with our resources if we do get a big crowd.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? But...
I'm glad for this program because there's at least two of us up here that are over that magical age that tend to fall every once in a while, so thank you.
Yeah, who's that?
Ed and Charlene.
Oh, okay, good. All right, thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, now consent items eight, one through eight, five. Anybody want to call a consent item? Mr. Lawson?
Make a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point five.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve consent items eight, one through eight, five. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Mr. Raddies, an aye? Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to general business. Nine, one, Presentation and Discussion on the Comprehensive Plan Including an Update on the Preliminary Phase Two Public Outreach Survey Results and Review of the Project Schedule. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Is this the right one? Yeah. Today, we wanted to give you a presentation and give you some of the results that we've, that we're receiving on our survey. As you remember, we did a Phase One that started in, at the kickoff of this hometown Christmas parade, and we finished that up in February, and we started in March, we started the Phase Two, which was a long survey of 25 questions. What we wanted to do is cover 16 questions of the 25 on the long survey today, give you some food for thought on where we're headed for policies on this, because what we're going to have to do is take the results that we're getting from this survey and put that into a policies that the city will adopt. This presentation that we're doing, and with me today is Karen Craig with Creative Cities. She's our consultant that we've hired. We're going to do this presentation as interactive, so if you have comments as we're presenting information, feel free to just speak. We didn't do like a question thing at the end. We'd just rather have you interact with us as we go through the information. We're also going to cover what the current survey counts is, because when we did this present, we prepared this PowerPoint, our numbers have gone up quite a bit since when we prepared the PowerPoint. So we'll give you our current numbers. We won't have the current data for you today, but we will have our current numbers, and then we'll cover what our next steps are going to be and where we're at. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is you were given a handout and also an attachment. We found when we did this presentation on Thursday to Planning Commission, the graphs don't have the full answer on there, so I did hand it out that. If you look at the bottom of your handout down here, this is the graph that would be in your, on the slide, doesn't give you the full answers. So I gave you this handout so you can see the full answers. With that, I'll turn it over to Karen.
Okay, so we've been on an economic vitality roll with presentations today. Let's remind you that the comprehensive plan is underway. Our public outreach goal was to engage residents in real conversations, to see what they would like for Sparks in the year 2030. Our strategy again was to try to go to people where they can engage with us instead of inviting them to come to us, and we've been having great success at that. We, much credit, I think, goes to Armando Ornalis, because we as consultants said, you can't use the long form, you've got too much information in it, and he stuck with it, and he's right, because we have 95% of respondents using the long form as compared to the brief form. And if we drill down into who's using the brief form, it's mostly people who want to talk about it light out on their street and they're running, running to get to the comments. The people who are really engaging in the long conversations are taking the time to go through the full survey. What you saw in your, in the packet that was submitted on April 11th was that we had 475 review, surveys returned. As of this moment, we are at 1,060. That was as of noon today. Got a funny email from Adam Mayberry yesterday who said, Facebook is blowing up! There are more than 321 people interacting with our survey on Facebook that went up Friday, and that was as of yesterday. So that's basically in about 36 hours. Our goal, let's be clear about the goal of 664 surveys, our goal is actually 2,000 surveys in this section. What the number 664 is, is that it's the statistical validation for a community the size of Sparks. Okay, so once we have 664, no matter who answers, by theory, it should come in with the same percentage of a 5% margin of error and a 99% confidence rate.
So with that, what we wanted to do is go through some of the questions and show you where we're getting some direction or answers. What we're going to do, the presentation today is based on our policy framework topics that we've created. Based on Phase One, we came up with, I think, there's six policy frameworks. So the first one that we wanted to talk about today was managing growth. As you probably know, the Sparks has a current population of 93,000 and we're projected to grow by the year 2034 to 120,000. And it's been, in the Phase One, it was pretty apparent that people want growth, but they want it to be managed, so that's why we've selected this as the title for this policy. So the first, one of the first questions in the survey was how should Sparks grow? And as you can see, 55% of the people are saying that we should focus our new development in existing areas by redeveloping and revitalizing the older parts of the city. Then the second choice is coming in at 28%, and that's picking all of the above options.
And growing as of today? Number one choice, still focusing new development at 57%, and all of the above actually dropping to just above 20%.
Next question, if we plan to grow outside of the city's current boundaries, should Sparks annex land four? The number one answer on this survey so far is do not grow outside the current city limits, which indicates that the general public feels that we should stay within our city limits and develop, and redevelop our area, our town. The second answer was if we do annex, it would be for open space and parks.
And actually, that's running number one today, so there you go. All right. The next, in terms of, again, going back and connecting the visioning phase with this deeper dive phase, people were very concerned about traffic and growth and the pressure on how we move through the city. It, it's an integral part of our city's fabric, how we move from place to place. We mostly take cars, but it includes streets, bus systems, pedestrian paths, trails, bicycle routes. The role the city plays doesn't strictly lie within the city, obviously. We have to work with NDOT, RTC, and other partners. But many of the constituents don't recognize that. So our goal here is to try to understand what they need and then find the right way to put into policy for the City of Sparks to answer these transportation options needed within the region. So, in 2030, how would you prefer to primarily commute to work? Today, it's at 77%, but I call your attention to, look how high bicycle is. We're going to start drawing down these numbers and parsing them and looking at what the millennials are saying, how they want to get to work, looking at how different generations, different parts of town, so that we get a much clearer sense. And part of why we're doing this is when we're looking at, for example, Audi, that's rising in, in double digits of people riding bikes on that thoroughfare. I think planning and policy very much wants to understand that, and again, from council and planning commission's perspective. Okay, running number one and two on what transportation issues should be priorities in Sparks. Number one, improve existing street and road pavement conditions, stays the same today, building new roads and widening existing roads. Again, that matches the primary desire for cars, but I think if you look at some of the things that are in the 20, 25% range, there's some people looking at 15 years and a different vision of how to get around them. Public safety, enormously important. It's a function of the city because we need to provide fire, police. What we've learned again in the first survey is that crime is very, very important in some parts of our community, particularly in the series, in the city's older neighborhoods. Also with popping is the city's sewage treatment facilities and flood control, running very high, including for language that says, would you invest in these things? Not just do you need them, will you invest in these things? And in some cases are running at 80% plus that they would invest in these things. So, in 2030, Fire Department, what Fire Department emergency services are needed most? Running number one the other day was emergency medical services. Today, it's running number two. Emergency response is what's at number one today, followed by emergency medical services. And again, we're talking about Fire Department services, not focusing on wildfire suppression down in the 20s, or individual house suppression. Police Department services needed most. Number one, by a lot, neighborhood cops. And let me describe to you what we're hearing that means from, from people's comments. People would like to feel in their neighborhood that they recognize who their policemen are, and policemen who recognize what's normal and what's happening in that community, and know people by name, and know what store hours are, and know what's going on. You have nearly 62% of the population here saying that a neighborhood cop would be their number one choice. Their number two choice is gang and officer units. And as you can imagine, when we drill down in some of those, that gets into very specific neighborhoods. Okay, good on you. Keep wanting to add.
Next topic is community facilities and services. That's the main functions of the city is our, is community services, including street maintenance, street, traffic lights, street sign maintenance installation, sewer collection and treatment, storm drainage, infrastructure, and also the maintenance of the city properties and parks. So the first question that we wanted to present to you is in 2030, what should the city prioritize for public works? The number one is road maintenance, which includes paving, striping, sweeping, snow removal. Number two is traffic light signals, and that's also kind of tied with, in my opinion, they're very close, tied with park maintenance.
Do you have any? Park maintenance is ahead today.
Yeah. Oh, is it? Parked.
John, Speed Humps is not on there, okay? So you're, you're, you're safe. You're safe.
So which city services in 2030 for utilities and facilities are most important for the city to prioritize when planning for growth? city to prioritize when planning for growth? Excuse me. Number one is new roads at forty-five percent. Then there's a tie at thirty-nine or forty percent, and I don't know if those numbers have changed.
They have. Tracy, you're winning again. Park and community centers are number one today. Number two is new roads, and number three is sewer collection and sewer treatment plan.
Oh. So we're finding some little bit differences from our previous numbers. The next question is regarding services and what's important for the city of Sparks to prioritize for growth, planning for growth. And number one was street maintenance, cleaning, and snow removal. Number two is community planning, and number three is code enforcement. So.
And I know she can't say this, but I can say this. Community planning is number two? I think that speaks volumes for what people are saying for how to look at the city. That's never on people's radar, and it is today. So drilling down into community and neighborhood character, we're learning that people want to revitalize his, more historic sections and older sections of the city by beautifying, updating and fixing homes, communities, and business, rather than expanding to more, expanding beyond the city boundaries or to larger housing projects. They're also asking for more parks, pools, and community classes. We got this in the Vision Survey by the overwhelming response we had from people who say that they wanted to live in a small town or small community. So when we asked them, "What does that mean to you?", today fifty-six percent said, "A neighborhood with parks and playgrounds." The number two answer still pops as one of the most surprising things in the survey. What does small town and community mean to you? Number two answer is a vibrant downtown with shopping, restaurants, and events. So we drilled, drilled deeper. What do you consider is downtown? Could it be Victorian Square, Legends, the Galleria at Spanish Springs, the Craterway Corridor, or somewhere else? Nope. Seventy-five percent of people say Victorian Square is our downtown.
So housing and affordable housing, that's a very important topic. People have to have a place to live and must be relative to what their income is. So one of the questions that we asked in the survey was, "What type of housing do you expect to be living in, in the year 2030?" The, at this point, the overwhelming support is that people are looking at a house on a medium to a large lot, with number two being a house on a small lot. So still coming out to show that most people want to be living in a single-family house.
I think that'll be another interesting one to drill down on the age demographic and ethnicity demographic, to see if some of those change in terms of smaller, more discrete populations, so we're going to look into that.
Resilience and sustainability. This addresses the management of disruption of things, forms of change in the ability for the community to adapt and work within those changes, for the future generation and currently for the city. The question that we asked regarding this topic is, "What policies should the city of Sparks pursue to maintain fiscal health?" And the number one answer that's come in is that aggressively pursue growth that enhances tax revenues, followed by a close number two, which is increase the city's cash reserves and reduce debt. And are those numbers?
Those numbers are still the same. I do think, if, if there's something interesting to add, when we start pulling some of the commentary where people are adding their, we give them a place that they can add a line or two or ten of what they feel. It caught our stakeholders meeting by surprise the other day that we were hearing from anyone, let alone a number of people who say quietly, "I'm willing to pay more taxes." And then all of a sudden, one by one by one in the stakeholders meeting, people are saying, "I'm willing to pay more taxes. I'm willing to pay for these services. I'm willing to pay for bike pass. I'm willing to pay for parks." So I think that that's something that certainly my radar says, "Nobody wants taxes." But we're actually seeing in writing people starting to say, "For the services I want that aren't on a priority, that haven't been on the highest priority, I am willing to pay for that." We'll look into that and see if we can parse those numbers some more, but we thought it was worth bringing to your attention.
So next question is, "What should the city of Sparks focus on to increase its community sustainability?" These numbers are all, in my opinion, relatively close, but the number one answer is water conservation, which probably has something to do with the fact that we're in a drought or coming out of a drought. And then number two is solar and renewable energies, which is a close third at protection of our river and wetlands.
So back to the theme of economic vitality. We want to stay a desirable place to live, work, and visit, but that requires a dynamic, diversified, and thriving environment. We also know that the economic base that we focus on really should complement the character of our community. So when we asked residents about the most important for the city of Sparks to report, the number one answer is to attract new business and industries, followed by number two at retaining existing businesses. This is interesting. What strategies should the city of Sparks adopt to increase economic vitality? The number one answer, optimize technology and online services to become more business-friendly. Number two, allocate additional city funds to support special events. So let's give you a sense, actually, I think we should ask if there's any comments. Did you have any aha moments? Anything surprise you? Anything you're glad to be seeing is showing up, is what we're hearing from the, from the residents in the survey?
Mr. Lawson.
I, I find it interesting that overwhelmingly, they don't want to grow the city, but they want to grow revenues. That is, to me, too, it's contradicting. And, and that, and then that they're willing to pay taxes, they know that we can't tax, and that has to be done by the state. So I, it's just interesting, all of it is interesting, that meld of government where everybody gets the feds, the state, and county, and the cities mixed up, I think.
It is.
So it's, it's just interesting to me, but, uh, no growth, but we want more revenue.
You know, I can tell you from reading the surveys, if you're interested in, in parsing that, for people who are saying the online component, you know, I think they're saying smarter growth, not spatial growth. So can we enhance the types of businesses by providing enhanced connectivity, connect, connect Wi-Fi interaction, redundant energy for different businesses to be able to come in? I don't, I don't think, from what I, the way I'm reading it, it's mutually exclusive to have more tax, we need to go wider. It, it seems to be reflecting, can we get more dynamic in what services we offer or abilities for businesses to do here, which may be?
And also include redevelopment or revitalizing some, like our industrial areas and things like that.
Yeah, and that's another.
Increasing the density within, you know, like, in the downtown area, residential density in the downtown area, things like that. What, some of the other comments that we're getting.
And they're aware that, you know, our industrial area is in a flood zone that costs about twenty-five percent more to build there now.
No, they're not aware, yes, but they're not aware, but that's the challenge we face, and so to have businesses that?
To me, it's very interesting. It's kind of all over the place in my mind.
Okay.
It is interesting.
Ms. Mayberry.
I had a question on, you talked about drilling down further, parsing out this information. Will you be taking, because some of these are very generational and age, your responses from millennials are going to be very different from those of us that are baby boomers. And, and that tells us a story as we're looking to planning for the future, the generations, each generation and what their needs will be or what their priorities are, something to take into consideration. And I'm curious on the percentage of people from all different age groups that are responding, or if you're getting a cross-section, or if you're just getting predominantly a lot of boomers and older, who have the time to sit down and do that, and, and how do we, if, if we're not getting the range of ages we need, how do, how do we reach out?
We're actually doing pretty good in the age range department. So right now, we have nearly twenty-five percent age twenty to thirty-four, so one out of every four people are responding, thirty-five to fifty-four, so just shy of a boomer, I would say, thirty-seven percent. Then that comes to booming age, which is fifty-five to seventy-four, that's about thirty-seven percent as well. So, you know, roughly forty percent is our generation, and the rest is younger. And we do have a really interesting upcoming outreach program that we're going to be doing at Sparks High School. We're working with the Latino coordinator for Sparks High, who's going to help us set up a photo using smartphones to document what high schoolers would like the city to be, and it's going to be posted on social and Facebook, so slightly different than taking the survey, but interactive in terms of, uh, under a nineteen-year-old population to get involved through kind of a photo, interactive opportunity.
Instagram.
Instagram, exactly.
Yeah, Instagram.
Yeah, yeah, Snapchat, Instagram.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I found the comments about flood control very interesting, that they're, they're so concerned about it and are willing to pay for it. My, my experience is nobody minds raising taxes as long as you raise it on somebody else. And we had proof several years ago when we tried to pass, I think it was a quarter percent for police, we were in dire need of more police help, and it was fifty cents on a hundred-dollar purchase, and it failed. And I had a lady come in my office, she says, "Ron, I didn't vote for it." And I said, "Hey, we live and die by the vote, that's whatever, whatever happens." And she says, "Why don't you tax seven-up Pepsi and Coke?" And I said, "Let me guess, you don't drink that stuff, do you?" And she doesn't, so. I mean, I was, I was pleased to see those votes, and Sparks stood up to the plate eight years ago, five forty-one a month for the North Truckee Drain, and we promised to spend the money on that, and that's what we've done, so, good stuff.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I get the sense in, in parsing this again, and again, this is a PR challenge, you know, this is a comprehensive plan about what you want the community to look like and develop for fifteen years. You get a lot of interaction now that says, "I, you know, I would like this now," or "that now." So the, the time horizon's different. I think people are, when they're asking about raising taxes, it's to pay for amenities, not necessarily infrastructure, and that's where your challenge is going to be. But, but it's curious to see that the amenities, they are saying they're willing to pay more for, so maybe it's what we're asking for the dollars for. I think the other question that we didn't include in the slides today, but is a fascinating response, in a question that we used on investment about the sewage treatment plant, certainly not anything anyone would love to put whose sense to, and yet it was, the phrasing that was chosen said, "Would you invest in, in upgrading the sewage treatment plant if it protected the water quality of the Truckee River?" So you have a cause and an effect and an investment, and it's running at almost ninety percent in favor of. Now, I can't promise that if they vote tomorrow, that's what they'll vote for or tax someone else, but that is a huge number of people who are relating a cause, effect, and a payment.
And most people will vote for an item if they know where the money's going.
Yes.
And we stick with where the money's going.
And I think what's great is that the public loves this leadership. They love your community. So, you know, maybe the hurdles are, as you're saying, it's very confusing to what jurisdiction does what, but they very much believe in you. So again, in your planning and your policies, I think you get to be very bold about being who you are and where we're trying to go, because they really do love this place, and they seem to believe very much in the leadership.
Read that question again about the sewer.
Let me pull it up exactly.
You have it pulled.
Oh, no, let me pull it up.
I got it right here.
Okay.
You also have, in your handout that I gave you, I included the questions that we're not covering today, so they're all in your packet, so you can all look at those, too. No, that's not it. I don't remember the number.
Well, she's looking it up. Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a couple of other things that are going on. So right now, we're organizing bus tours with stakeholders, about two hours on each tour, we hope you'll join us on, on one of those tours. But what we're doing is looking at things that the public's saying, like we want to redevelop in, in downtown. So the bus tours will go places, for example, that say, "Okay, here's a four-story apartment going right next door to a single-lot residential area. We want you to see what that looks like side by side," because that's what people tend to be asking for here. How, what do you think about that? Is that what people want? So those bus tours, they'll probably be going on the second week of May and the third week of May, but we're going to drill down some more by showing these kind of choices that you have in your plan, side by side, and getting your, your feedback and opinions on that.
So it's question ten, and it says, "Do you support continued investment in the city's sewer treatment plant to protect the Truckee River?" And it's ninety-five percent support that.
Doesn't that lead you right directly to a yes answer? I mean, who's not going to want to pay more for what you just said? I mean, to me, that ninety-five percent doesn't register with me that that person, those people would actually vote for spending more money on something. I mean, that, that question to me leads you right to yes, does it not?
Well, I don't, my opinion is, I don't think so, because if you say, let's leave one of the three words out in the sentence, "Will you pay for a new sewer treatment plant?", that's not a yes answer. "Will you pay for a new sewer treatment plant that protects the Truckee River?", that's getting a yes answer. So, "Will you support the Truckee River with a new sewer plant?", you're not recognizing that there's a cost factor. So I think by linking the three questions, it may lead you to it, but you're not missing any one piece that's critical in a, in a person's decision-making. And, and Mr. Mayor, you'll also see in the full survey, we've also asked, "Would you invest in fire stations and in police stations?" They are getting good responses.
Yes.
But nothing like this response.
Okay.
So I think, you know, it's worth noting, and again, we're going to parse these some more, sorry, did I just hear, oh, God, from the back. That one registered particularly high.
Any other questions? Julia, you there?
I am.
Questions? No, okay. Is that it?
So we, we talked briefly while we were looking that up about the bus tours that are coming up. We've been at Planning Commission, we're going to be distributing survey links to community groups, we've been at various organizations, we've been making our rounds, HOAs, youth groups, faith-based community, we're going to stakeholder meetings, and we continue to engage with residents, and interestingly enough, the public seems excited to engage by the internet, much like they're telling us on the survey.
Okay. That, Karen?
Yep, that's it.
Thanks, ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nine point three, consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number Thirty-Two-Ninety-Two in support of comprehensive federal public land legislation and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, and members of the City Council. For the record, Neil Krutz, Assistant City Manager, here today with a resolution seeking your support for a comprehensive federal public lands bill. And to give you a little bit of background, a few months ago, Councilmember Lawson approached city staff and said, you know, "Hey, do we need to look for additional opportunities to expand our city for, for job generation, for economic vitality, for economic growth in the long term?" And as, as we began looking at it, in an area that we'd actually looked at previously was, was east of our current corporate boundary. So I've got a map up here in the north, let's see, north is pointing out. In the green boundary there is the current city limits for the city of Sparks. Interstate eighty here running into the East Truckee River Canyon runs out that way. This land here shown in that pale yellow, it's about thirty-two square miles, twenty-thousand or so acres, that is currently owned by the federal government and administered by the Bureau of Land Management. And certainly, there is a lot of developable acreage out there. There are a lot of hills, but once you get up above, above the hills north of the freeway, there's some, some reasonably flat ground out there. And so a question comes to mind, could that land be developed as a, as an extension of the city of Sparks? And while strictly speaking, we don't know the answer to those questions today, we do know that land under federal ownership, you know, has the potential to, to come up through some sort of, of federal process that might make, might make it ours to, to take a look at. And, you know, the first step in, in getting towards answering questions about expanding your city is this, this long-term process where we go through a, you know, a federal legislative process to, to try and potentially gain control. So we've been working with some other folks to put together a resolution. You're seeing a version of it here today, similar versions should be presented to both the county commissioners and the city of Reno Council here in the coming weeks, because we've, we're trying to work cooperatively with all of our, all of our folks here in the, in the Truckee Meadows towards our, our mutual benefit, you know, going forward. It's worth pointing out that kind of the eastern end of that, of that pale yellow area there on the map is, is adjacent to and north of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. We all know what a success that has been with those million-square-foot-plus pads out there. And so one- And so one question that crosses our mind is, is there an opportunity for perhaps something on a little bit smaller scale to the north of that that might feed in and complement development out there going forward? And if we're going to do that, might that be a logical extension of the city of Sparks? So, again, we've got a lot of questions still to answer, but this seems a good place to start, since the land acquisition process through the federal government is a very long-term process. That said, you've got, as part of the staff packet, a proposed resolution that we prepared. We have, we took the liberty of sharing that with our congressional partners at the federal level, and they did ask us to propose to you a change from the language that we first put under your nose, if you will, for consideration. And so I'm showing it here, the proposed changes. If we can zoom in a little bit, and everyone will be able to look at. In section 9.3 in the resolution, the language that's part of your packet today reads, and that's actually the lowest paragraph there, "Section 3, the Sparks City Council respectfully requests Senators Reed, Heller, and Congressman Amade aim to secure the enactment of comprehensive federal lands legislation for Washoe County by the end of 2016." They've asked us to modify that a bit, and that's the second paragraph there, the proposed language that would read Section 3. The City of Sparks, the Sparks City Council respectfully requests, respectfully requests, that the congressional delegation aim to secure the enactment of comprehensive public lands legislation for Washoe County. So really, what we're trying to do here is get your approval, your support, to pursue your federal lands for the broader county, certainly a portion of it might be in our city going forward. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Mr. Adams.
Neil, would it be immutable to our congressional delegation to say that the City Council respectfully requests that the Nevada congressional delegation?
While I would never attempt to try and speak on behalf of our delegation, I don't think they would find that a problem.
Because that's kind of what you had in there originally, and you're not naming names, but you are generalizing them, and we're asking for land in Nevada, so, I don't know, I'm just throwing it up.
Yeah, I think our council can certainly consider that, I don't see it as an issue. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This was language that was submitted to us by the congressional delegation, it's the language they were asking to make it as easy for them, possible to work in a lands bill where the state of Nevada and others will be working towards different sections. So while I don't have objection to adding the language in deference to the staff of the three main federal offices that have asked for this specific language, I would be more comfortable if we use the language they provided.
And it would probably require more support than just a Nevada congressional delegation. So that's a good point, okay.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Well, I'm glad we're pursuing this, Neil. As you know, this was my nightmare, I woke up one night and I said, "Boy, how are we going to grow, and how are we going to support this massive growth that's going on in Story County, where basically Washoe County is getting all the expense? People are going to live with us, so we're going to get all the health and human services that we're going to have to pay for somehow." Obviously, we can't do that on just housing alone, we have to have some commercial, I believe, industrial-type development. Story County is very much on board with us acquiring this land and opening a complementary industrial center to them, so I'm real happy that we're getting this moving, and, you know, I have some pretty aggressive goals, and I'm pushing this very hard around the region, so I'm just glad we're to this stage. It was, this is not going to be an easy task by any stretch of the imagination, but I think, long-term, for the city of Sparks, this is what needs to happen, because industrial taxes will grow with our economy. Home taxes do not, so we can only grow at a very small rate with our home taxes, so we'll never keep up with police and fire and parks and all the other things that we just heard on that survey that everybody wants, if we do not have a healthy and vibrant industrial or commercial area for the entire county. So, thank you again.
Ms. Bybee?
I would like to thank Councilman Lawson for coming up with this brainstorm of an idea that I fully support. It just makes sense. We talked about, we mentioned the, you know, our current industrial area in Sparks being in the floodplain, and the issues that that presents to those businesses, the cost, the insurance, and looking for expansion of industrial areas, and I don't think there's an appetite to go north on Pyramid Way, other areas where there's space, and I think this just beautifully ties in with Interstate 80, with the Great America Parkway, with connection out there, and even connecting Wingfield Springs in our northern neighborhoods through that possible, through that land, and connecting down to people that are working out at Trek, that might live at Wingfield, you know, it'd be another way for them possibly to access. So another way out of Wingfield Springs, because as we continue to grow, the impact of traffic is, again, one of our primary concerns. So, and I also for the economic growth of our city, I think the industrial is really where we need to have that expansion for our true economic growth, and I fully support this, I hope we can move it through quickly, I know that's probably unrealistic, since we're working with the federal government, but as quickly as we could pursue this with congressional, our congressional delegation, I'm fully in support of this and look forward to seeing how we can make this move along quickly.
Any other questions, Julia? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I would like to thank Mr. Mayor. So I've already shared a few of my concerns with Councilman Lawson and staff, I have a bit of a challenge with the concept in that I think that, we just heard the resident survey saying that they'd like to see us stay within our current boundaries, and this does, in some ways, open the doors for sprawl. I'm happy to see that it is a comprehensive public lands legislation and does include conservation, and so that maybe the trade-offs there could be protecting some lands for conservation while figuring out a smart way for the city to grow. I think what I heard in the staff report was that this is the first step in opening the conversation, but that there would be lots of process left in terms of making sure that it's financially sustainable, making sure that it's environmentally sustainable, and all of those questions. Is that my understanding, is this really about starting that conversation?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. So I'm willing to vote yes today to start the conversation, but I did want to go on record saying that, you know, I really think that we need to make sure that we are paying attention to both the fiscal sustainability and the environmental sustainability of a decision of spreading in that direction.
Okay, looking for a motion.
No, is this the land we annexed several years ago and then de-anexed?
None of this land we had actually annexed previously, it was in the study area from before that we walked away from as a whole.
Okay, well, and I think times have changed, and I think we are ready to grow, and we need to produce revenue, and that's a great way to do it.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no further questions. I move to approve resolution number 3292 in support of comprehensive federal public lands legislation with the language changes as presented by staff.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve 9.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously, thank you. 9.5, consideration and possible award of the 2016 permanent patch contract, AC 5234, bid number 15-16-010, PWP number WA 2016116 to Sierra Nevada Construction. Mr. Speedhump?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, John Erickson, your city engineer. As the mayor indicated, the project before you is a contract for the 2016 Street Rehab Unit 3. Where this project is located is over by Catherine Dunn Elementary School, we're bordered to the north by Howard, to the east by Rosemary Drive, and Green Gray off to the south. We estimated the project at $1.85 million. We received four qualified bids, and Sierra Nevada Construction submitted the low bid at $1,657,007. Staff is recommending approval of the contract. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John. Julia? No, okay.
Nope.
Okay, number 9.4, looking for a motion, Ms. Charlene Bybee?
I move to award the 2016 Street Rehabilitation, Unit 3 Rehabilitation Project Contract AC 5233 to Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $1,657,007. And $7.
Have a second? Mr. Lawson? Second. Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Agenda Item 9.4, outlined by staff. Any further questions? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, 9.5, consideration and possible award of 2016 Permanent Patch Contract AC 5234, bid number 1516-010, PWP number WA 2016-116 to Sierra Nevada Construction.
Good job.
John?
I'm happy to report that we did not have any issues with our contract this year, and so we had, it was an engineer's estimate of $350,000. We had four qualified bids, Sierra Nevada Construction, again, came in as the low bidder at $298,007. Staff is recommending awarding the contract to SNC.
Questions? Motions? Mr. Smith?
Okay, I move to award the 2016 Permanent Patch Contract AC-5234, bid number 15/16-010, PWP number WA-2016-116 to Sierra Nevada Construction.
All right, you have a second? Mr. Lawson? Second. Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
He'll be right along. Thanks, John. 9.6, consideration and possible approval to purchase 70 traffic signal controllers and 80 traffic signal cabinet modifications from intermountain traffic in the amount of $279,400.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager, for the record. This item in front of you is for purchasing 70 traffic signal controllers and upgrading 80 traffic signal cabinets in the city of Sparks for, basically, this is technology upgrade. Our old controllers are based on Windows XP and no longer supported, and so we need to move up into something that we can continue to maintain. These controllers that we've chosen are being utilized by the other agencies in the valley, so it keeps us sort of inconformant or whatever. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ron. Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve the purchase of 70 traffic signal controllers and modifications to 80 traffic signal cabinets to intermountain traffic in the amount of $279,400.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 9.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Please display, thank you, passed unanimously. 9.7, consideration and approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement under AC 5235 with Nevada Department of Transportation, NDOT. Go ahead, Ron.
Good afternoon, again, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. This item is requesting permission to enter into an interlocal agreement to perform the installation of new controllers that will be purchased by the State of Nevada Department of Transportation into 35 of their cabinets. We currently do all the maintenance on those signals that are located within the city of Sparks, and as part of our continuing interlocal work that we do with them on our signals, it would include this. With that, I have any...
Questions? Okay, seeing no questions, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to approve 9.7 as presented by staff.
You have a second, Ms. Bybee? Good job.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay. 9.8, consideration and approval of interlocal cooperative agreement AC 5236 with the Nevada Department of Transportation to provide maintenance for 41 NDOT signalized intersections within the city of Sparks. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay. Anyway, again, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. Today before you is an interlocal agreement with the State of Nevada Department of Transportation to provide maintenance on those signalized intersections within the city. This list is part of your packet. I might be able to zoom in and add on this if you'd like. Basically, this just lists out the signals, the locations of the signals within the city of Sparks that we maintain. And currently, this part of this maintenance that we're already doing, this will shore up some of the language that we're having some issues with. This is born from the new intersection work that's being done on the McCarran and Pyramid, and the Queen Way and Pyramid modifications, and this portion of this agreement just covers part of the work that we do on the other intersections, and in the near future, you will be seeing another interlocal agreement that will comprehensively bring all of the signal maintenance together under one final agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Corman? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve interlocal cooperative agreement AC 5236, NM 077-16-015, with NDOT to provide maintenance at 41 NDOT signal locations located within the city of Sparks.
Mr. Lawson? Second. Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Agenda Item 9.8. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
I'm a yes, this thing's not working. Yeah, it is. Okay, passed unanimously. Don't say that. 9.9, consideration and possible approval on interlocal agreement AC 5237 with the Nevada Department of Transportation to provide maintenance on landscaping improvements in the area of the McCarran Boulevard and Pyramid Way interchange. Mr. Corman, go ahead.
Again, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. This item is to enter into an interlocal agreement with the State of Nevada, NDOT, to provide maintenance on landscaping in the improvement area at the intersection of Pyramid and McCarran. This is sort of our project area, this is McCarran Boulevard, and this is Pyramid going up towards the north, and... The area that you can see that's kind of got squiggled pink in it is the landscaping that we're going to be responsible for. This bottom one, this is actually, should be this way, this is Pyramid Highway going up, and then this is McCarran, and so the landscaping is on the east side of Pyramid, on both sides of McCarran, to the east of Pyramid Highway, and then up into the Queen Way area. east of Pyramid Highway, and then up into the Queen Way area. And just sort of as a, not sure how well that's going to come through. I was able to pull this from the RTC website. This is just sort of an artist's rendering of what that landscaping is going to look like. For the most part, it's going to be trees. There's going to be some, you know, other kinds of the rocks and that kind of landscaping in there. So it's not going to be, you know, grass, no lawn, or, you know, maybe some bushes, that kind of thing. So fairly minimal amount of maintenance. There is a representative here today from the RTC, if you have any questions for them.
Questions? Ms. Bybee?
I just had a question. It said that we'll operate these at no cost to Nevada, to the NDOT, but I don't see fiscally. Is it just within our budget, or where is the, any financial impact of the work that we'd be doing there?
It's a minimal fiscal impact because it is just trees, and currently, we are already under obligation to maintain what sort of little landscaping there is down in that area. There is some irrigation there that we currently maintain. This is certainly going to be an addition to that. However, we feel like the amount of work that's going to be required there on a yearly basis is going to be fairly minimal. The most routine type of work that we're going to have to do in that area is the sidewalk clearing, which we currently do in that area. NDOT is going to be responsible for graffiti on the walls, things like that, at least on the Pyramid-McCarren side of it. We would be responsible for anything that's on the neighborhood side, if you will. But from everything that we've looked at, we think that it's going to be fairly minimal impact.
So it's basically within budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, I would add that this, these types of improvements were requested when the project was first brought to light, and RTC went and did some neighborhood outreach, and those are, you know, this type of landscaping is what the residents in the area requested.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Let's say we just add a buck to each one of those signals we maintain, and then we got ourselves covered right here. I don't have any questions. If we want to make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve Item 9.9 as presented by staff.
You have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve 9.9. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, 910, consideration, discussion, possible approval of the fiscal year 2016-17, budget recommendations and fiscal items, including city manager's recommendations for the City of Sparks' final budget and to the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Kronk.
Ron was on such a roll. I asked him if he wanted to do this too, and he declined. Unbelievable.
Great.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director, for the record. We are here before you today to present to you the city manager's final budget recommendations, not the final budget, but the recommendations, and we're seeking direction to, final direction to fill out the final state document, as it were, and we'll file that with the state that's going to be due by June 1st, as you well know. So what we're looking for today and what we presented today are really two primary items, one being the city manager's recommendation that's contained in what we call the City Manager's Recommendation Book, and it is a large book, growing every year. And as one of the attachments there, we're seeking approval of the five-year CIP plan. So, and that's going to be as a final document, or final attachment to the document that we've got presented to you today. So with that, I just want to make sure that I've got my dates straight, just so we have, so I could put on the record of what we're expecting to do for next steps. So today, we're presenting the recommendations for the final budget for fiscal '17, but coming in May 23rd is when we're scheduled to bring back the final document to you. On that date, we're also going to combine that date, and we're going to have a public hearing on the tentative budget. Recall, we've done that in the past on the third Tuesday of May when we do this, and state law has changed, and that's allowed us to bring it back on a regular council meeting. So we're going to do that on the regular council meeting scheduled for May 23rd. So we'll have the public hearing on the tentative budget, which has been filed. That's due by April 15th. So we'll have the public hearing on that tentative budget, and immediately following that public hearing, we'll have the, we'll bring back the final document for your final approval. So that's kind of where we're at today. Excuse me. So I wanted to remind you just quick where we've been. If you recall, we had a budget workshop on February 29th, and a lot of what's presented to you today was what we discussed on the 29th, so we're not going to go through the book page by page. We would be here a very long time if we did that, but I could certainly do that if you'd like. I could talk about this all night long, right? So what I wanted to do is just kind of cover the highlights and kind of remind us what we covered on the 29th, and talk about a couple of things that have changed between now and, between then and now. Not a lot, like I said. But please, I want to invite you to stop me, because sometimes I'll be reading this a little bit, so please stop me if you have questions, and we'll just go forward. But I wanted to remind you that we have a policy-driven budget process, and we discussed those six policies, again, at length at the February workshop. But just to reiterate, I just wanted to go through them real quickly. Our first policy is to establish a general fund minimum ending fund balance, and as we discussed at the workshop, we are presenting to you an ending fund balance of 6% for the fiscal '17 budget. So that was based on the direction that we received in February. Policy number two was to establish a contingency budget within the general fund, and again, per direction that we've received, we have established and presenting to you a $1 million contingency budget, as we have done in the past, especially since the recession, and it's worked well for us, is we're tying a transfer in to the general fund from the motor vehicle internal services fund of an equal amount of $1 million. The intent is not to use that transfer in unless the resources within the general fund are insufficient to handle anything that the contingency budget would be used for. Policy number three is to transfer resources from the general fund into the Capital Projects Fund to maintain the city's infrastructure and technology needs. And for fiscal '17, that amount comes to $2.7 million, okay? No change, like we had talked about in February. Policy number four was to commit business license revenue to the stabilization fund. This is new this year. Well, the policy isn't new. We've had this under review for many years now, but we haven't put any money in there, I believe, since 2012 was the last time. And right now, we only have about $231,000 in that, and we've waited, really kind of unwinding the effects of the recession, and we've always kind of looked at fiscal '17, even the past few years, we're saying, well, let's build some of the resources back that we drew down and zeroed out in some cases during the recession. Let's address this situation once we start, you know, getting our feet under us, and lo and behold, here we are, and we think it's time to stay to that plan that we stated a couple of years ago. And so we have put forth a commitment of $200,000 into the stabilization fund for fiscal '17, which should, by the end of '17, give us about a $436,000 balance in that fund. Okay? And again, that was no change to what we had talked about in February. Policy five, the personnel costs are less than 78% of the total general fund revenues. That's, the purpose of that, again, is, as a reminder, is just to maintain our balance spending throughout, make sure that we're not getting out of whack, you know, spending in one area and not, you know, allocating resource to other areas, which we, again, saw during the recession. So this is a measure for us to go by to make sure that we're addressing all areas. And the budget, recommended budget we've got in front of you today has 77.7, so slightly under the 78% goal, all right? And then the last policy is six that we discussed quite in depth on February 29th relating to the other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB, and our workers' compensation, mainly heart and lung cancer benefits for our public safety personnel. We discussed that in length, as I said, in February, and we're maintaining a pay-as-you-go policy, and that's still the case for what we're recommending today. So again, no change there. So with that, I just kind of want to give you a brief overview of the book that was given to you as part of your attachment, and like I said, the CIP is part of the appendix. But what this book really is, and I want to give a quick shout out to our budget team, I think two are in attendance, Stacy and Derek, and I think Jennifer, who tends to be a little shy, and if you know Jennifer, I'm saying that facetiously, but the three of them put in an inordinate amount of analysis and time and, you know, hours that go into not just putting this book together, but all the detail that's involved. But just very quickly, the book's broken down into some major sections, so we really use this as a reference tool, and that's what it's designed for. So, you know, please, between, you know, now and when we're going to come back to you and approve the final budget, I'm easy to find, you know? This is for reviewing, if you have any questions or concerns, this is the place to find things. We use this throughout the year. But really, the first part is looking at our policy, policy documents and the various leadership that we have. The Meeta, it starts on page 13 and runs through page 76, and in there, you'll find various financial overviews. You'll see in there a cause of change from fiscal '16, our current fiscal year, to what we're expecting in '17. And again, a lot of this is what we covered in detail on the 29th, but changes in revenues and, you know, the various revenue, C-tax and property taxes and the various expenditures. That gives a more detailed analysis as to what we're, what are the causes of change between one year to the next. In that Meeta section, you'll also find contributions to other governments, which I do want to touch base on here in a brief moment. Our central service cost allocation plan, which is a process that we use to allocate some of the central services that we provide mainly through City Hall, think HR, accounting, IT, city council, you know, where the other funds benefit for that, we can charge, it's really a charge for a fee, or a fee for a service, if you will, to use those central services. That is described in this, in this book. And really, the part that I'm really most proud of is pages 44 through 73 is what we call other funds. You know, for years, we've looked for a way of developing a process to highlight and, you know, daylight some of the, some of the other funds. We have, we have many different funds. A lot of the focus is on the general fund, and rightly so, because that's the main operating fund of the city, but we maintain many other funds that are used for specific purposes, capital projects funds and debt service funds, and you'll find everything you need to know and then some in that section there on all those other funds, and we separate it between some of our larger funds and then our smaller funds. Going down through, you'll also see a section for the redevelopment agency, which we'll present here after our meeting, after the city council meeting, we'll come back and talk about redevelopment agency. There is a section in here about the city and redevelopment agency's debt. There's an overview of that. There's also in here a department review, and just talking about what the different departments do and the highlights and the org charts throughout the city. And then again, as I mentioned before, we have two appendices, one being the capital improvement plan, which is Appendix A, and then the city manager's new needs, the full, not only just what he's recommending, but the full book, if you will, mini-book, discussing what all the new needs were submitted by the various departments. So again, I just wanted to highlight what's in the book, and again, that's a point of reference. A lot of the material is the same kind of information that we talked about on the 29th at our workshop, so I'm not going to go over the detail, but certainly wanted to answer questions. But there was one page that I wanted to highlight, page 41 in your packet, which is the annual contributions to other governments and nonprofits. There are a couple of small changes that happened since last time we talked, and actually since when we published this information for this meeting to what we know today. The first one being a potential impact, but we don't know the amount, is the regional training center. Right now, we have allocated $93,000 as a contribution for the, for that training center in fiscal '17, but we have since learned that the community college wants to pull their, potentially pull their support for that starting next year. That's in the works, so we don't really know what the financial consequences of that. We may or may not know that by the time we bring back the final document. So this may be one of those situations that we file a final budget, you know, for something that may change after the fact. So, so no dollar change on that yet, but we just, we know that that's something we need to work through. The other one was for regional planning. There was a 10% increaser approved by the regional planning board, so that increased, right now, we're showing in the, in the document that we're showing, giving you today, 205,162. That's going to increase to 215,420. So that's an increase of $10,258 that will be included in the budget, and we will capture that when we submit the, or present to you the final document come May 23rd. The last one is a very small amount on the City of Reno West Care Triage Center. We kind of had a placeholder, if you will, $90,000. We just hadn't heard the number, you know, when we had first presented this to you. But since then, it looks like there's going to be no change, and that's a contribution of $87,000, and that hasn't changed over the last couple of years. So we're going to, it'll be a small change from $90,000 to $87,000. So those are the small changes that I wanted to highlight. Other than that, I am ready to either answer questions or defer to the city manager who might have any other comments or take comments from you. That's the extent of my presentation.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern continues to be the OPEB contributions, and considering Nevada was just announced as the fifth, fifth out of 50 states, about, we're the fifth one with the biggest problem as a state. And at some point, and I know we beat this up, but at some point, we just can't do nothing because everybody else is doing nothing. So, and I know we can't do anything for this year's budget, but I think we really need to look at something for next year's budget. I just think we need to protect ourselves. Just a comment.
Okay. Anyone else, Mr. Ratty?
Nope.
Ms. Bybee?
A quick question on the, the interlocal agreements with other government agencies. Where does animal control come in our budget? I don't see it listed with the other Washoe County.
And nor, oh, please.
Based on voter action and based on the results of that, we divested ourselves of animal control completely, and it is the full responsibility of Washoe County. There was tax consequence that was transferred to them, and they took on 100% of the operations and responsibilities, so there is no agreement because we're not in the animal business.
Okay, so we don't make any contribution to that. It's solely under their control, their tax dollars that pay for it, and we don't financially contribute at all?
Well, this council did dedicate pennies of property tax that transferred from our operating fund to their operating fund at the time, so it did contribute a large sum. It was a couple million dollars worth of potential revenue growth.
Through property tax.
Through a penny or so of property tax.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Okay, I move to approve the city manager's final budget recommendations for fiscal year 2016-17.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve Agenda Item 9.10, our budget. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
So that we'd have two motions, one for the city manager's recommendation and one also for the, and I apologize if I didn't make that clear, if we were looking, for a second one for the CIP, and this would actually be approval of the CIP, whereas the city manager's recommendations was approval to move forward on the budget, but the CIP, this would be the last time that we would bring this to you as a full document, so we were looking for a separate motion for that. I apologize, I didn't make that clear.
Okay, I move to approve the proposed five-year capital improvements plan for fiscal years 2016-17 through 2020-21.
Second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve the five-year capital improvement plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, public hearing, second reading, public hearing, discussion and possible adoption of Bill Number 2705, amending Chapter 5.52 of the Sparks Municipal Code. I'm not reading the rest. Who's doing this? Chad? No?
Yes, this particular bill is, uh, aimed at, uh, giving the police department another tool that they can use in, uh, in tracking and maintaining and keeping track of, uh, criminals passing through our area. Uh, criminals enjoy a transitory lifestyle, uh, that makes it easy to evade local registration laws, uh, sex registration laws, those types of things. Criminals oftentimes set up, uh, temporary criminal enterprises or labs, uh, in various cities, uh, to, uh, assist them in identity theft, uh, counterfeit checks, counterfeit credit cards, counterfeit money, human trafficking. And these individuals typically need a base of operations for fencing stolen goods or just conducting criminal activities within the, uh, within the municipality. And the cornerstone for this, uh, criminal activity is the ability to secure temporary housing or a place to park a trailer or a camper, uh, and essentially go undetected within the community. This particular bill is aimed at, uh, those businesses that rent rooms, uh, or lodging or spaces on a temporary basis where criminals may reside. And this makes it easier for our police department to go in, uh, to these, uh, businesses and find out who's there, who's in, who's in town. Um, oftentimes, many of the people who are staying there have got warrants, and it's, uh, again, another tool for our law enforcement, uh, personnel to use against the criminal element. Now, this particular ordinance has been on our books for quite a while. And at one time, uh, all of these businesses had to comply with a written demand or verbal demand by a police department to go in and, uh, provide them with their guest registries at the time. Who, who are you, who do you have, uh, residing with you? What is her name? How long have they been here? And on and on. The United States Supreme Court ultimately said that that is not necessarily a constitutional practice, that it's not an administrative search, that we can still get a warrant if we have probable cause, or there are some exigent circumstances. But nevertheless, the, the chief complaint that the Supreme Court had was that these business owners did not have any type of due process rights if they decided to decline an invitation by law enforcement to turn over their, their books. So, what this does is it gives these individuals, these businesses, a, uh, due process right to, uh, uh, not only refuse, but to challenge and ultimately get a court order, uh, protecting them if, if, uh, a judge were to see fit to, um, you know, based upon what our police department would say, uh, decide that, hey, uh, they don't have to turn it over. So, this is essentially a, um, a bill modifying our existing laws to provide additional protections to those businesses that are running temporary, um, lodging and spaces and those kinds of things. It also amends our law by requiring these types of businesses to report to Sparks Police if there is a minor in, uh, renting, uh, a space or, or a room or a unit. Um, once again, aimed at, uh, child runaways. Uh, we have issues with, uh, every now and then with, uh, sex trafficking. And, um, it, it's just updating our laws to recognize the constitutional protections that the United States Supreme Court has, has now granted to these particular businesses.
Questions from the council? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we've always had this on the books, but if, uh, somebody running a hotel or motel decided they didn't wanna do it, we couldn't force the issue, or we wouldn't, or we didn't force, enforce the issue?
Well, we could, and I think that, uh, I think we, we have in the past, um, forced the issue. Nevertheless, at that point in time, it was, it was, it was nothing unconstitutional or illegal about it. Police officers, I think, had, you know, had the right to go in and require, uh, require a business to turn this information over. And we, after being reminded of that obligation, we typically got that information.
Okay, so this basically gives the proprietor some protection if he does turn it over or when he turns it over, that he can't be held liable or...
This gives the proprietor the opportunity to say no to the police, that, um, if you want it, you're gonna have to go through a court process to get it.
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna catch anybody, would we? Any other questions? Uh, Ms. Ratty?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Is this a public hearing? Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular item? Okay, let's close the public hearing, bring you back to council for action. Uh, questions or motions? Mr. Smith?
I move to adopt bill number 2705.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lawson. Motion by Ms., Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Lawson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Closed-door session, no, Steve? Okay. Uh, comments from the public. Anyone wanna speak under comments from the public? Any subject? Okay. Comments from the city council, city manager? Anybody? Anybody?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, I have some announcements. Um, the first, the following committee is available. Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, one member of the construction industry for four-year terms. All subsequent appointments will be for four-year term, and applications for this position will be accepted until the close of business on April 29th. Additionally, um, we have Sparks Parks and Recreation Department, two members for a three-year term. Sparks Civil Service Commission, one member for a three-year term, and applications will be accepted until the close of business on May 13th for those two commissions. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting with a roll call. Uh, Chairperson Ratty?
Here.
Uh, Vice Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Schmidt, absent. Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Um, I'd like to move to, um, item number three, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to item 4.1, um, approval of the agenda.
Vote to approve?
I have a...
Second.
You can use these too, they say.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion by, um, Agency Member Lawson with a second by Agency Member Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
We can vote here.
We can vote here.
We can vote?
Yeah, we can vote.
I'm gonna see my face on it, yeah.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Item 5.1, uh, consideration poss- possible approval for minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of March 28, 2016. Do I have any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor? Please vote.
I will vote yes.
Passes unanimously. I'm going there. Julie, are you still here?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Okay. Um, business item 6.1, reported claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers to the period March 10th, 2016 through April 6th, 2016.
Move to approve, item here?
Okay. I have a, uh, motion by Agency Member Martini, second by Agency Member Lawson. All those in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. A little slow on the, on the machines here, sorry. Um, okay, item 6.2, consideration discussion, possible approval of the chief administration officer's final budget recommendations for the city Sparks Redevelopment Agency Areas 1 and 2 for fiscal year 2016, 2017. And I have City Manager Driscoll and, um, Chief Administrative Officer Jeff Bunk.
I'm bringing forward, uh, for you the city manager's budget recommendation for fiscal 17, and, um, not a lot...
Lot to cover in the redevelopment areas, but there, you know, this is, we have filed the tentative budget for both areas, 1 and 2. Uh, same process and same dates will apply. We will bring back the, the final documents, uh, for the, the state document to you on May 23rd. And, uh, again, we'll hold a public hearing on the tentative budget, so it's the same process that we're gonna fi- uh, follow for the city. Um, Area 1 is, uh, uh, it's kind of a good news, bad news, but for both areas, due to property taxes, uh, stabilizing and recent land sales, uh, both areas are holding their own as far as their debt service. Um, and we do not expect, this is the good news part of it, you know, we do not expect, uh, a, um, subsidy, general fund subsidy that we have had, uh, in the past. Uh, we, we certainly have been there for redevelopment 2, and redevelopment 1 was, uh, was a certainly a concern, although we never did get to the point of having to subsidize it with the general fund. But, uh, you know, the good news is that not only are we including no subsidy in fiscal 17, we also don't expect that, um, in subsequent years. So, you know, things are looking solid. Uh, the good news for, for 2, to continue on with that, is in fiscal 17, we will be paying off, uh, one of the, uh, larger debts. That will be falling off the books and freeing up about 1.1 million dollars in future years. So, starting in 18, we'll be, we'll be free from that. Um, so, other, other than that, uh, i- it's pretty much status quo, honestly. Uh, you know, there's, the, the bad news is there's not a lot of money in there yet, but, uh, you know, so the good news is that they're, they're stable. Um, with that is my presentation. Uh, whether City Manager has any other comments, but, uh, same, same thing as what we're looking for today is just a, approval or other direction, um, to file the final budget, and we'll bring back that to you on the 23rd of May.
City Manager, any other comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the agency members? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the budget.
Mayor Martini?
I move to approve the budget. We use the burden. Exactly.
I'm forgetting we're going from that to just looking at each other and...
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by me, by, uh, Agency Member Martini, second by Agency Member Smith. Um, all those in favor, please vote.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
This is working very well.
Okay. I'm confused with the new screens. No, it's taking a minute. Um, do I have any comments from the public? Hearing none, comments from agency member or chief administrative officer?
Yes, I do, uh...
Agency Member Martini?
I'd just like to thank the staff for putting these new voting machines, and they seem to be working very well, until we got to, uh...
Using them.
Redevelopment. Thank you for making me look like an idiot.
That's not their fault.
Okay, any other comments from staff? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.